The conservation district's budget. It's kind of that annual thing. And then I think I have district reports as well.
Is that an advertisement for their positions?
Yes, Patty got the full-time job. She took, she had a release position in the...
FSIA.
In our state or FSIA, yeah, whatever they call that. Okay. NRC or... Okay.
So my question about that though is we approved that budget based on a pay increase for her specifically, like from where she was the year before to what her pay increase was going to be. Do you remember that? I remember that discussion because they brought it in here. I think that was the only increase in their budget was for pay. Wasn't it?
I thought it was services, but I didn't go through the budget. I don't remember. Somewhere I have district reports and if not, I look back at the district reports. Thought I pulled it out at the same time. Okay, I don't know why I have so many copies of this Adams Brown Baron and Bell. I have a ton of copies. I think Council on Aging brought three copies in and then you had brought some copies in, so...
Like Alexis, but she already had one, so...
Okay.
Probably, probably the one, the third copy.
That I will probably get rid of if you guys don't have yet. Or if you have.
You're gonna keep the copy right in the office.
Yes.
You'll file a copy.
Yes, I have my copy to file. Okay.
You might give Randy one. Nobody minds.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Here is the KAC.
Oh, thank you, the schedule?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to look at that.
And then we have the hotel options except for I'm sure pretty much most of them aren't booked, so we're gonna have to. But I wasn't sure what date, so you could kind of see what you wanted and...
Yeah, I know, I mean, I want to go the first day and just not convinced about it is the last day.
And then these were the minutes and the agendas for K camp and K work, which would be for you. Okay, and then I have an ambulance employee I need to, to get taken care of.
You have a one?
An ambulance employee I need to take care of.
A new employee?
No, he's been there a while. And when I pulled out, I couldn't, I couldn't figure out why are we paying him three different wages? And then I, it dawned on me...
Alex Winters?
No, Alex Winters.
Alex Winters, yeah.
We never actually formally approved him to take regular part.
He just, yeah, he graduated and he was on Rite Home, but I think since then he's...
Yeah. So like when I was trying to pull out to figure out, because he's taking volunteer time according to...
The contractor's split.
But then he's also picking up a shift here or there, and so when he's picking up a shift here or there, he's actually there. So we were paying him a different wage, so we need to set that wage because I have absolutely nothing in the minutes as that said. And that is what the wage should be.
There he is.
Morning.
Morning. Give you a copy of this audit.
Okay.
Take your dinner from the Council on Aging. We have a copy there.
Thanks.
Give you something to look at. We have a resignation truck driver. He's located, I believe.
And I forgot to bring that down last week.
Wasn't this a relatively new rider?
Well, he'd been here.
A year? He's been a year?
Alex.
Jacob, he's probably been here two or...
Okay.
Two years.
Okay. I thought I was on when we hired him, but maybe not.
I don't know.
He's going with his.
He hasn't been here two years since I did that.
I just thought maybe I was on when we did that, but I could be wrong. Can't keep track of all of them.
I think, no, that girl was here. I don't remember for sure.
Didn't they just have the grease trap pumped not too long ago and we just had this built?
They did it back when they, uh...
After they fixed it?
Yeah, after they rerouted the pipe and everything.
So that hasn't been moved but two months maybe?
That's the same deal.
I don't know.
July.
Oh, that's, maybe that is July? I don't know, that July, August.
Check them. I don't remember when that was.
Are you able to pull that up, Don?
Let's see.
Ready Services, Ready Industries. That pumps the trap out, the billing date is 7/27. Note that is back when they, uh...
After they finished it?
Yeah, when they were rerouting that pipe, I don't remember when that was.
Don, you gave me tomorrow's agenda and I know there's nothing on today still, right? There's no adjustment is all, I mean, I looked at it, but...
No, I'm sorry.
It's just the same, right?
Yes. I probably in my minutes printed out, but I couldn't find it. I copied it and punched it in. I probably did two sets. I only just didn't want a bunch of people to show up and take, no one takes a good session, but I didn't really know how to put it, so I thought it was that way. My people wouldn't know that.
Have we been in contact with Bob Sebel or Seibel yet? I still don't know how to say his last name, Sebel.
I think she...
I mean, are we, how are we going to ask him to turn in his travel expenses?
Uh, she provided me, you know, with the cost for the... So I... I have upstairs, I also have the tracks for the senior centers upstairs, but I didn't really know to use for travel.
Sure. R E D D I, I think, yeah.
We can certify, I guess, the appropriation for the Conservation District. They have to submit it to get their match, I suppose.
My only question on that is did we approve an increase from last year on their budget specifically for a raise for the current employee?
I don't remember. I was a little... There was a slight increase in it, but I don't remember. But provided the reason, we do know.
How much was that?
$500 even.
And created a high new bill in June. And it said it was dated April 9th. This is the end of the first year.
April, May, June, July, so that's three months.
Yeah, was you saying June?
Yeah, but it was in April. I'm just wondering, so that would be before we fixed it in April? And that would be after we fixed it? That shouldn't be so soon. I mean, I'm wondering why.
I'll see if I can get some clarification on the, all of the graders and they might apply to conduct soon.
Are you sure that we pumped it on January 1st as well?
January and then April?
Well, I think April was when they, they had to pump it out to change the line.
Before they changed, before they fixed it, right? That would make sense.
Maybe, maybe we've been doing it every six months, I don't know. January would be six months.
The rest of these Lincoln Park Manor bills, toilet parts, a lock, an exit sign, sheet rock, toilet seat. A PVC trap and pipe cleaner.
Okay, there's the one for the... It looks like maybe only about $380 per salaries.
Okay.
Everything else, I think, travel expenses, administrative expenses, which is submitted to the board and just the office expenses.
Do we need to do some, what does district board budget?
Yes, you will sign, um, on the front page, it's a weird little box right there. Those are the only two that require us to send something back.
I have a couple corrections on the minutes. Go to the Sylvan Senior Center paragraph. About the, one, two, three, four, fifth line down, you have commission and then my last name. Did you see that one?
I was supposed to be commission.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I'm just saying it just, it needs an ER on it, on the word ER. And then if you go down after the vote, this is a little ambiguous. It says Commissioner Wallace related that the 2017 funding had already been distributed to the Council on Aging and that they would need to request, uh, the 2017 funding from them. It doesn't say who the "they" is, so I would maybe replace that with this, the Senior Center, yeah. And then it doesn't say anywhere in there, and I believe it was Terry, so correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't say anywhere in there that it was suggested that the commission create guidelines to receive the mill levy money? Because then it kind of just pops up with the next motion, which is me asking for an attorney opinion on creating that set of guidelines, so we should mention that the commission is going to do it because currently and in the past, it's been a set of regulations that have been created by the OCCA. So if you just wanted to add, I don't know. I would say right after. Yeah, it says Terry moved to distribute the funding, but right before that, he also said he thinks we need to create our own set of guidelines so that if, if and when we do distribute, we have our own expectations. That's the way I understood it, and I think it was you.
I believe that, that's correct. I did say that.
Okay, so... However you want to put that, I just think it needs to be in there because then my motion doesn't make any sense as to why I would make that motion unless we knew that... Right where you said, um, "discussion ensued regarding what expenses should be paid for", that's the missing link there.
So if we add, yeah, discussion, so you're, what expenses should be paid for and...
The commission should create, it would be a new thing, so I would use the word create. Yes, please.
So any regulations?
Just regulations, because basically what it means is if anyone's going to be receiving that money, they would have to fall into that criteria, which one would be, for example, being a nonprofit that serves seniors. It's kind of obvious, but...
Okay, so that sentence reads, sorry, discussion ensued regarding what expenses should be paid for and the commission should create regulations. And of the commission should raise regulations.
It's, yeah.
And of, so it says discussion ensued regarding what expenses should be paid for and the commission should create regulations.
Yes, yes, thank you. I think that's pretty much all I had.
Should the legal... I think that is a separate paragraph. Should it be opened up?
The, the... No, I don't think, that's fine.
We did it more so drawn out so I could have it to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any other corrections to minutes? Not an entertaining motion approved? I will send move. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Not all those papers, say aye.
Okay.
Let's see, do we have others left?
No, no. No, because we did the interview later that day, so let's vote. And do we have minutes from the interview, Don, the first interview? Do we have minutes from that? Or did we already correct this or look at them?
You already, for the interview came from...
The first interview, we've done two, this has the second one. Did we already do the first one?
Yeah, it was in August the first.
Okay.
I would move to certify the budget for the Conservation District.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Not all of those papers, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the minutes I had Alexis seconded and everybody voted aye.
Yes.
As corrected.
As corrected.
Sorry, Leanne, was there some pushing this?
You got a little to talk about the building? Is that correct?
Yes, but we actually want you to go and tell us exactly where you want this wall built. Mike Street came up, well, the person from Precision Electric came up. And he's working on that, but then they sent Mike up to discuss the HVAC, the split system upstairs. And he said, "We really need to know where before they can give a price" because they need to know how much square footage they're looking at. And then he also said that whatever we did, we'd have to insulate the ceiling or it wasn't worth anything, so it's not just a wall, we're gonna have to put a ceiling on it too. The other thing was, was I think that maybe Aljo had come down and said maybe do it in the center of the room, so we just want you guys to go up and decide for sure where you want a wall. Because like Mike, he needs to know to, in order to be able to do HVAC. And he kind of gave us a rough estimate that it would be about $5,000 and I asked him if he would also tell us what it would do just to do the floor. And he says like basically five, around $5,000 per unit, so he's thinking about $30,000 just rubbing it at, at, at first thought.
The whole floor of split, okay. I thought you meant the floor. Okay, I understand. The whole third floor to change it over, cut off the, would that include cutting off the boilers?
That, that was just a wild guess.
Yes, I think, just to kind of see whether or not you guys really wanted to have a look at that a little bit further. You know, that was just like a really rough guess.
If I understand that right, you need the window, correct?
For the split system.
So we have to decide, I mean, there are three sets of windows up there. And we originally talked about doing it the front end, but then that eliminates access through there, so we talked about doing it on the side where the jury already sits.
And then the discussion was about whether or not you took the wall to the roof that day. And Leanne and Mary Ann did some measuring and I think you have that, that she could bring down to show you.
Did you do comparison with the room that's already in existence?
Um, did we measure, well, we already had the measurement for that on the blueprint. We just wrote that on the blueprint, gave you the blueprint that.
Did you give it back to me? Okay, I'll go get it.
I'm just saying that we, so we know those filing cabinets are three and a half foot deep and so that space isn't used in that room. So whatever that remaining square footage is for space in that room should be sufficient to copy...
The problem is, is it's really not. I served on a jury without all those filing cabinets and we tripped over each other. Now, I don't know what the last jury did and how, but you know, even when we had our one commissioner meeting up there, we were tripping on each other. So you need a little bit of room that people can actually move in without everybody getting up to exit in order to...
We'd go look, I think it'd be better if it was to the, to the north away from...
Everything else.
All the other activities.
And we definitely have to go clear to the window because we need the window. So it would have to be the entire length. And I would assume you could just use the outside wall. Why would you not be able to stone, right? I mean...
I think the other problem is, I understand there is, was, and it's going to be another law introduced into the Kansas Legislature that will not require the judges to live in the counties. That they will be able to live where they want to, but they can be appointed as a judge. Therefore, it's, we're going to be doing video. And I don't know whether our courtroom is set up to do that. So we may be looking at some more expense to, to that. I don't think they even know exactly how this is going to, to work, but I think it's, I think we're probably, a county our size, it's a good possibility we won't have a judge living in our county, but that will serve our county and possibly most of this will be by remote.
I would think you could take any electronic service that you need, including like power lines, video lines, et cetera, up through the floor.
Yeah, but I, I think that, I don't know what the appearance of our courtroom may, the appearance may change, have to change some too, I don't know.
But yeah, there's internet at the mansion there now, so...
But I was brought to my attention that there could be some changes coming down for how the court is going to be, be done, so, no, we're gonna need a jury room, I know, I know that, but...
They have motion day to day, so if we're gonna go look, we need to go look now. I can't remember if she said it started at nine or 9:30.
And Jennifer also said that not only that, Aljo, but they can also now, you can testify video. So, but that all has to do with, I would think, whatever they're gonna witness in the hearing. And I don't think that would have anything to do with what we're gonna do as far as a private meeting.
Well, I don't, I think we're gonna have to have that, but I, I'm not sure that, I'm not, we may have a lot more room up there than we think we do, I mean, you know, when we...
If they're gonna start doing more.
Yeah, yeah, there may not be a need for so much. I don't know, they said the Lloyd has already redone their jury or their courtroom, they totally redid it, I've never been up there. They took their benches out, they're all chairs now.
Have we talked with the judge? We didn't really discuss anything with him. Maybe we could ask for some input, is he here today?
They have motion at nine, they start at nine.
I don't know if they start at nine or at 9:30 or if she was saying that they...
We could recess and run up there and look at the jury area.
Yeah.
Before they, before the court starts.
I'll grab that, you said you gave a...
Yeah.
At least they can watch outside the door and see across the wall.
Yeah, other than the clerk having to be with them must be the ideal place, but I think we, they're gonna discuss it with the judges.
But there are two people in that office frequently.
Yeah, part time.
Not all the time. I, I don't know how much Chris wants.
But I'm saying how many jury trials does Lincoln County have in a year? One? You know what I mean?
Maybe, maybe.
So for us to go to great expense for one leak of use, of usage in a year is silly. I mean, we would have, we have to find a way to do it that's utilitarian for us.
Well, I told, I asked Taylor, asked the judges if they could possibly use the room that David's in right now for a jury and that would solve all the problems right there.
A lot of problems.
Except creating another office upstairs.
Well, we just have to... We could do it off that, because the door connects, okay?
We could do it off that, because the door connects, okay? It could be on the inter, we could make a room for Jennifer on that, in the storage area.
Storage area.
It'd be pretty, but...
The whole problem with that, in, when we originally talked about it, that's what she suggested, the attorney. But the whole problem with that was, Taylor said she needs to be able to access into that storage area, and if they're doing something in that room and the court is going on, there's no access to that background.
Well, there's gonna have to be some...
Somebody's gotta give.
There's gonna have to be some... Everybody but the courts.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
There's gonna have to be some bandwidth on that.
We could probably put a door in Jennifer's office to, to get into the storage rooms, and that way she would have...
There is one.
Well, I mean, if you office out right there, but door, so they could go through Katie's office, Jennifer's office, and she would be able to get in behind, without accessing her.
I understand exactly what you're saying, I agree. But that was the original discussion, and it was like, what if there's somebody in their office? You can't even get in their office to get around, then the court's in session, then you can't even go through that yet. But that was one of the original...
My office, that's the, putting an office in there.
I mean, what you say is, "Excuse me, may I just go through here for two minutes and grab something?" And they have to put their conversation on hiatus. I mean, that's logical, but...
Well, let's see what the judge would say.
I'm not gonna contact Brennan yet until we have a closer idea of what we're doing. Okay, sounds good.
Okay, let's see, we've got a part-time hire for BMS?
Yes, I think I already thought of it. So, uh, I think that Alex actually started back in April, taking his volunteer time and, um, we were paid him then also to take occasional shifts where he was actually up
Little fastie of April 3rd.
Um, I haven't looked back until years, as long as I'm still in that.
But he was...
He's doing, uh, so he's one of those that is a true volunteer at times, and then there's, at times that he's actually taking a shift. He's only taken like one or two shifts.
And is that the rate he's been paid for his shift?
Yes.
So we need to make it retroactive, basically, to, to...
Yes.
Agree to the payrolls that have already been processed.
Retroactive, April 3rd, is that what you wanted to say?
Will you look and see when we first paid him?
I don't remember.
Because technically, you're not supposed to pay him until you guys have set their wages. How he slams through, I don't know.
I don't, I don't remember when that class ended. But it been around there somewhere, April.
We paid him for the first time in April, on April 30th, so yeah, you did back to April
30th, or, oh, for the month of April. I move to set the pay rate for Alex Winters at twelve fifty-five an hour, retroactive to April 1st, 2018.
Part-time BMS. I'll a second. Any further discussion? Not all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Just get me from that, I don't know what, thanks, I can tell you that. Okay, what else do we have this morning?
I want to say one more thing about the courtroom. There's, uh, Terry. There could also be an option, that little coffee area that they have behind the judges, like in the judges' chambers, um, that wall, we talked about bumping out that wall, because there used to be a hallway there, you know, from the access to the, to the district court. You could almost bump that wall into the courtroom and have a big enough space back there, and there's a bathroom attached to it. So the jury would recess to there. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'll accept it. If they were doing some kind of motion, then their jury couldn't hear, that's, that's what they're concerned about.
To try to get him not to walk through.
But I mean, either way, if you have a room that is an abutment to the actual court area, you know, the, the court hearing space, then you would have to just well-insulate. I mean, if we pop that wall out, or they're building a new wall, you can insulate to whatever degree you wish in that area, and then just the little bathroom is all, that's the only other thing that's back there. There's a den space where they have coffee and such, and then there's a desk and three chairs. I mean, she said there's not even a computer back there.
Well, let's see, let's get, see what the judges think, and then we'll decide.
So, they had Dave from Files say have come up to price out, you know, moving those units and give Jennifer pricing, and he brought their bids up on Friday, but, um, they wanna do some modifications to them now. So, um, they'll bring that back up this week, but I had him go ahead and bid eight times two unit for the HR person, and...
That same thing, the same structure?
Yes, so it'd be, yeah, two of them. Uh, yeah, so basically, it's two vertical file systems where you can flip them, so you have access to both. And when he was here, so I had him bid one unit, because I know that HR is gonna need something if we move the employment files down, just depending on what it is that our overall goal is with that person. Um, one thing that he talked about is steel prices are set to go up October 1st. So his prices are only good through September 30th, because the steel prices apparently are going through the roof. And they've received their notification, and he can't budge. So this is the bid for one times two unit. But while we, I was talking with him, um, we got to talking upstairs, and they actually make short times two units, which I didn't realize, I thought it was just one size and that was it. But I wanna say that he told me forty-two inches high, that, and he's going to give me a bid on it. But he's thinking two units at forty-two inches high, and then a person could have...
A desktop, or, or countertop.
Yes, and so I'm going to have him bid that. And he said, basically, what they do is they set the units in, and then they buy a piece of, um, laminate surface and put a countertop on top of them. And he said, um, it would be about forty-two inches by the time you get the cabinets and the laminate top on it.
Are you thinking this for HR?
I was thinking this for HR.
So if someone comes in, they come up to the counter space, they have their files underneath them, and their desk is also there for their use and behind that, yeah.
And he's gonna bid it both ways with a back on it, so if you wanted to use it as a counter, or if you had it off to the side against the wall, so one, one back not on, or, one bid will be with no back, one will be with a finished back. But then that way too, you could also use it to put, uh, your printers on, and a warp surface, and, et cetera, so...
There'll be files in there, maybe secure.
Is that the same, that's the same amount of storage space though, as this? Because it's double, it's either vertical or horizontal, is pretty much what we're saying.
Basically, yes. And, and it may not be as much as that, I just thought I would go ahead and give that to you, so you could go and see what...
What did he say about the, getting the end caps and all that for the other pieces upstairs?
They can do that.
No bid yet, though?
Uh, no, he gave them a bid, um, but I think originally it was to move into the new jury room, and now they decided to move into another room. And he was gonna bid Jennifer the cabinets across with the countertop, but they kinda changed it up, because he felt like maybe that might be a little bit too expensive for them, what they, what they needed for room size, so...
And is the district court and the county attorney, are they gonna pay for that out of their own budgets?
Um, that is a question. I imagine it probably depends on what the pricing is.
So this is three thousand eighty, and that's for one width?
Yes, that would be for one, and it would be letter size. So like, that giant one upstairs is a legal size, but...
It's three and a half feet deep, is what I got.
They could, they could probably do that, but it's not included in the budget, so we're gonna have to make up some difference somewhere through the year.
We can ask them to split thirds or something, I mean...
And I will look at that, um, capital improvement fund to see what it says specifically for office equipment, et cetera, but, um, just so you know, the pricing is going up. I did ask him about bids, and right now, they're the only dealer that sells these particular units in the state of Kansas. So he said what he could do is he could provide you what the contracted price is with the federal government and the contracted price is with the state of Kansas, um, and then their bid to, so that you could see whether or not they're being competitive or not. I really don't know who else sells them, because the company that Rhonda bought first from, which are a little bit on the lesser side of quality, are no longer, is no longer in business, so, unless you guys have some suggestions.
My concern with this for the HR is that basically eats up the entire commodities portion of the budget.
The only thing is...
For one whole year.
Mm-hmm. The thing is too, is we're probably gonna have to have something this year. So the reality is, is we'll be paying for it this year.
Oh, that's a sure thing, yeah.
Did you happen to do a calculation to, to know, basically, since the HR person is gone, what kind of fluctuation we have there with that money that would have been spent for the last quarter in pay, to know?
Oh, for me, no, I haven't, I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm just saying, if, if we do, if we have a hire as of October 1st, let's say, at whatever rate, do we know, can, can we figure that out, what we have as far as, I mean, I'm assuming that's how we're gonna pay them.
What we have left out of my budget, yeah, and then how much you're gonna be taking in.
Especially if you're not gonna have a part-time person, then we have a hundred percent of that person who's gone, we have their pay. And so, but we don't have any, we don't necessarily have any expense, uh, budget there.
Correct.
So would you propose that if we did happen to make purchase, that it would be out of the county general?
That's what, the county general or out of the capital improvement fund, I'll just need to look and see, because I know we included office equipment for the courthouse, I just don't know if we need specific offices. That's what I would propose. And, you know, it feels like we're having to move on this a lot, but, you know, if they're talking at twenty or thirty percent steel rate, and I can't remember what he told me about, I'm almost positive he told me a thirty percent steel rate.
Well, I also would like to reiterate that Leanne said she is going to be very busy from the end of this month, pretty much, to the end of the year. So I would like to see us do some movement on the office, on the internal offices that we know we can get done without any construction.
Uh, the appraiser's office is cleaned out, and, um, yes.
Where the bus is gonna go.
And they're wanting to, that cabinet, they're wanting, I, because I suggested that they go ahead and paint the office before we move Jerry in. We need to figure out desk for Jerry, which Jerry's made some measurements of some of the stuff that's behind the, the courtroom, um, to see if we can make work. Jennifer has, she had a table, which I think is the same table that Jerry is wanting, so I said something to her about maybe the old commission table, because she said she would be fine with just a table in her office. So I think we have that worked out. And I said, once we get Jerry moved over, so, um, but...
Take his desk and put it down to the HR room?
Yeah, yeah. If, in, in order to paint, they're wanting to move that cabinet, well, the only people that we have that can come help move is the highway department and their chip ceiling. And I told John Paul that is a, a no-go, unless it happens to rain, because they have been delayed on the chip ceiling. And supposedly, I think it's supposed to be nice this week, so, I, I don't know, but I said, "Can't you just paint?" And he was gonna wax the floor, and Jerry's ready to go whenever we want to, we just have to figure out a desk for him, and...
I don't think we need to paint behind it, it's not gonna be moved.
I was gonna say, I thought the whole reason it wasn't moving is because it was so attached to its spot.
I'm not sure if it could, well, I think it could be moved, it's just gonna take a lot of work.
I think we can paint it earlier.
Leanne, who's gonna move your equipment from one side to the other?
I have contacted, but I think next to, he's one of the, the, we'll probably do our own moving and set up things, but...
Get it set up, and then have them...
Have them come, so... Mary Ann made an interesting, uh, recollection. She said that back in the day, they hired, the courts hired someone to be the bailiff.
Yeah, they did.
The jury, John T. Lane was back in the day.
During their incessant.
John T. Lane.
So I said, "Jerry will run the office, and Chris will come down here and sit outside the door and, and lock that door off," or whatever.
Good.
I think that would work somehow with us.
That's, that's a good suggestion. I mean, why, why else do we have that part-time person available to be? I mean, you would think...
Well, I'm almost positive that chief clerk comes down during jury trials as well.
I mean, logically, it's like, if you want them to be contained to one area, logically, it'd be better to have them have their bathroom access where they are, not traveling three stories. Right. And then if it's a Monday, we just move.
Yeah, we reschedule, we're doing them.
Right, we do the afternoon, evening, or whatever, that Monday, if they're here that week or so, so, something like that.
Yeah, I think, let's see what they say, and then we'll, we'll, we'll kinda do what we need to do.
So my thoughts was, was Jerry's current desk is one of those L-shaped pieces together that we would use that for HR temporarily, and we can buy some floor units to go underneath them. And so my thoughts was, was as soon as we get Jerry moved, then we take that table apart, and I can clean out the storage room that is in the office that she's going into, and get my stuff down, and then they could move in. I think she's waiting, though, on getting networking done, that has to be done first.
Well, and the question is, are we gonna have the same power surge problem in that room as we have in the current room?
Jim was here, and he thinks there's several electrical outlets, and he thinks they're on different circuits, so thinks all we need is to get it.
That's great, that may just solve our problem without rewiring a new circuit.
We have another vacuum tomorrow.
Awesome.
And we talked to Jim about, or I did, just going ahead and installing two ethernet cords. If he's gonna run one line, he might as well run two or three, um, there. I mean, it will have the cost of the line run, but...
No, I think you're right, for now, for a while, we might as well pull that.
Um, so then, that's where I was thinking, and then as soon as they get out of their office, then we'll move the desk down and get the other office set up.
Dawn, did you know that Jerry's gonna take that small desk that's in the bar's license room that we don't want, where he has his desk? And then he kinda liked to have some kind of table set up, so that his board can just meet in that office also.
Perfect, so in case this room is being used, that would be great.
I would, I think they're gonna be pretty well-done chip ceiling this week, so if we need help next week or thereafter, we could get some...
So Rhonda's not happy about that Mylar thing being moved to the other wall, she's not happy about it at all.
What, Mylar?
That big mad thing.
It, it came inside the appraiser's office, right?
No, that was the, I don't know what that was called either.
That big giant mad cap called what?
Thing that's in there up against that wall, Jerry wants it to be in the wall, and they're doing pallet jack, so highway department, people can't really play it.
Wow.
Well, it's his office, I mean, that's too bad. Whatever he needs to do, especially if the board's gonna meet in there.
We're just gonna have to make some things work. We're just gonna, just eliminate it, we're just gonna have to make some things work, we're just gonna have to beat that one. Okay, do we need to, uh...
Yeah, I have a motion for it.
Go.
You have what? A motion for you. Take it down.
Sorry.
I would move to enter into executive session for five minutes to discuss non-elected personnel in response to the interviews we have conducted.
I'll a second. There's no further discussion, all of the papers aye?
Oh, I'm sorry, with the commission and, um, Dawn Herlow.
All of the papers say aye?
Aye. I think since you're acting in that role as HR right now, that you can create your own document, and, do you know what I mean?
I, I'm gonna, I really... I, I don't have any objections, I just think we need to think...
Yeah.
...down the future, what this may mean.
Tell me when you're ready, Dawn. I move to extend the employment offer to applicant Christopher Harris for the position of human resource officer.
Have a motion to extend an offer, I'll a second.
I'll second. I'll second.
There's no further discussion, all of the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that it for the day.
I guess, I, we just have tomorrow, we'll be here tomorrow at 9:00. And the first thing will be an executive session, and then we'll have a report from the committee that was appointed to make some decisions about the nursing home process.
There's nothing else, we're adjourned until tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, please?
Yes, I am.